Fifty emails of something that we already know about. That's kind of the, how much we want to do it. Yes, we can open parts to the public, just to what extent do we? And it's all, when you watch the video, it showed like the six squares on it and they can hit "street sign down." They can hit that button, it'll pop up, it takes their location based off their phone's GIS, they can take a picture of the problem. And for a street sign, for example, it would send it to, I'm guessing Josh McClung. And then from that point, he could say, "Issue work order," it'd send it to his guys, they do the work order when complete, they would check it off, it would go to him, he can verify it's complete, push a button, and it would notify the person who initially filed the complaint on the app that problem has been resolved.
And you would put the facility scheduling on this and it would just be internal to staff, though, right? Wouldn't be available to public? Okay.
Yes.
Because I would want to make sure that you can't have an override?
They would see a shadow. Yes, they would, they would see a shadow once we approve. For example, the gym, if we already have something approved, they could pull up the calendar and look and see availability. It'd be shadowed out, wouldn't give them any information about what's there, but it would be shadowed as it's used.
Okay.
So if you pulled up the gym and said, "Hey, I'd love to do something this Saturday," well, you can pull up and go, "Hey, it's open from the hours of 2:00 to 6:00." And then you could fill out the application, submit it, and then when it'll run through, if approved, then it would gray out for you and give you that ability. And when approving it, it would send a notification to facility manager, anyone that we choose that needs to be notified of, "Hey, this event's going on, this is what has to happen for it, how many people are planning on being here, whatever curriculum we put in that they need to fill out."
Nathan had a good meeting with Brian. What was that meeting? Was it when you did the deal?
Yes, yes, met with Brian, with the GIS. We can, we can even put sidewalk, for example, sidewalk, side pass in here through our GIS and set it up for routine maintenance of, "Hey, every five years, we want to go out and do this kind of maintenance or inspection, ADA curb ramps." We put them in and we go out and do an inspection. We can require, some municipalities require when as-built plans are given, so a subdivision is finished, they give those shape files over, we import those right into our GIS with that information to where it's in there. And we've talked with Brian some about doing that.
If you've ever seen Lincoln, I would point to Lincoln, Nebraska. If you go to them and look at what they have, that would be the ideal customer contact where 40, constituent side of it, where they can report different problems from, "We're having speeding problems at this intersection," to, "There's a pothole at this intersection" or someplace else, unless the customers take pictures and everything, and it reports it back on what the status is on those problems and everything back to the constituent and to the public, so there's a public, you know, showing what's going on with this stuff.
Can I forward you all those emails we start getting when we start talking about speeding problems? Actually, can we buy a bigger server? I might need to do an additional appropriation for a bigger server.
I mean, the idea is cool, but I could imagine how overwhelming it could be, depending on how it gets used and if it gets manipulated or...
And we choose what's public, so for example, if we wanted to leave water, sewer, certain items from our GIS off of there, we can, they won't be on there. It's, the public portal will show what we choose we wanted to show, and it, you know, from that aspect, it shows the, they can pull up and say, "Hey, I want a, you know, tennis court." Once we, you know, as the town of Oz, or basketball courts. And they can pull up in the GIS, they turn that on, it's going to show them on GIS where all tennis courts are. So then our basketball courts, or softball fields, or whatever fields we put in. And I'm mainly speaking from the parks end, there's a lot with utilities. Brian liked the software, he's in support of it, thinks there's a lot of benefits to it. And it's, our thought is instilling it now and then later adding in departments if they start to see it, instead of just trying to throw the entire town at it right now and saying, "Hey, let's switch every department to this." Just get through the bugs with some of the street work and parks and get us in-house kind of understanding the facility or the deal. The facility manager is separate, it's listed in here as a separate price, we think that would eliminate a lot of confusion with any over bookings and moving the choir because council meetings or vice versa.
Have you checked with other municipalities that use this and gotten any references?
Yes, Danville uses this with Think GIS, they're happy with it. They gave us a lot of them out of state, there's not as many in-state that are using it, but they are using it and happy with the software. And there's a lot of municipalities use similar software, I've met with similar, a lot of those have a higher upfront cost because you're buying, instead of them hosting it and then running the server and maintenance, you're buying the software upfront for $30,000 to $50,000 and then paying $3,000 a year for maintenance agreements. And that, that scares me to go spend $50,000 for the software and then pay the maintenance because if we ever change away from Think GIS, which we've changed before, and then if the new stuff's not compatible or we run into more issues, this is a yearly agreement. And they handle all, they upload from Think GIS, they have a partnership with, do solutions for the mobile 311. Nightly, any changes that Brian or anyone else add to our GIS system, nightly it's updated into this mobile app. So it's, within 24 hours, anything added is available in the app.
You could feasibly put public meeting notices on this, right? We seem to be having trouble with some folks gathering public meeting notice information, so this might be another layer to do that. What I liked about this, a couple of things, was Nathan actually brought this to you already, back in August or September of last year. It's been vetted since then, it's gone through Jason, it's gone through Brian at Utilities, Nathan and I have talked about it, we don't like to just waste money, that's not what we do here. This is an added layer that helps us provide the services to the residents at a higher level. And I really like the fact that we could add the porthole that you take a picture of a pothole and it gets sent to us. Now, Jason will probably punch me the morning that he has 9,000 photos from 9,000 different people of the pothole. But we can, you know, we can deal with that as it, as it comes in, but it does tell our public. I think Indianapolis has a similar program. If you look on their pothole site, all of a sudden a pothole will pop up, and then there's a system where they'll fix the pothole or it's been scheduled to be fixed, and then they'll fix it, and then it'll turn blue or green or something.
That's a bad example, Carrie Kenny was doing something on that tonight?
Yeah, Carrie was doing something on that tonight, yes. How they're not, but I feel sorry for Indianapolis, but I, we think, we're going to split it, we would split the expenditure between, is that right? Is that what we decided?
I was going to say between parks, town professional, other parks, and utilities, from some end of utilities.
And we're positive that the $7,400 for next year's renewal is what it's going to be?
Yes, they'll put that into the contract. The contract will, you know, of course, go in front of legal and then Dax sign off on the contract, but that's the number that they put that they will, will honor for next year.
And that's going to be the approximate yearly cost, then?
Yes, he said they haven't had a, an increase. From last year, they didn't have an increase, but previous was usually around 3%.
So then it's just whatever they come to us and say, "This is what next year's increase is going to be, and we'll have to adapt to that."
Yes.
Or move on.
So in '19, if they came to us in '18 and said, "19's going to have a major increase for some reason," which I could see having an increase if we decide to add more facilities in, if we decide we want to add in sewer from our end, which would stay blind, you know, from public, a lot of different services. The gas could be put into it to where people could pull up out in the field if they needed to look at the veteran, what they've talked about. Anything that's in our GIS can be pulled up mobile.
And this is just going to have staff time savings and create efficiencies within the departments, that's what we're talking about, right?
Yes.
We're not creating new work?
No, and it also, what's, one, another thing that's nice about parks, for example, is I put in the acreage of the park, and then in it, when the guys go out and mow the park, they can hit, "Hey, I spent four hours mowing this." I can pull reports that say, "Hey, we're spending an average of, you know, $200 an acre per week, per month to mow parks." Cleaning bathrooms at the parks when we put them in, they can put that, they can hit materials and use pulldowns to choose what they put ordering. So then we can get a better time and cost justification when we move forward with future facilities of what it's really going to cost to maintain and build these facilities.
Another thing is inventory. We can use the front door for this building as well.
Yeah, I'd be able to tell you with a push of a button how many trashcans the park owns, or how many picnic tables the park owns.
That would entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion, we improve the initial investment of $13,717.50 for purchase of this and ask you guys to budget next year in your budget. The renewal gets budgeted in your budget in August.
Do you want to, in spending authority, split that three ways between parks? Is that how we're going to do it?
To the three users.
We're going to split it third and third and third?
We hadn't really came down, because we were going to look at who's using what and what appropriations.
Split it as appropriate?
Split it as appropriate. I mean, the town professional services line has obviously the most funding, while utilities do probably as well. It'll probably be heavily used by the utility. And so I would say the utility first, the town, and then the parks, who has a very limited budget. They could be using it more, but let's, let's not shoot ourselves in the foot.
Let's see how we do it, how we are using it, and then allocate appropriately a budget for the renewal.
Yes.
Mr. President, I am second the motion.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted, five to zero.
Thank you, I'll get you all app access as soon as we have it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is letter P, discuss the contract for professional services for the stormwater master plan.
There was no link on this one.
Uh, no, it's a discussion item, and I think we should move it. I probably should have said this agenda, but the more we think about it, I think we should move it on June, in my opinion.
Okay.
Okay, let's stay with it.
Easy enough?
Thanks.
All right, we'll go on to letter Q, discuss an expenditure exceeding $5,000, town accounting bookkeeping software.
Thank you, council, for your time. This is something that has come about fairly recently. As you may remember, last year, I looked into trying to get our credit card and automatically, like, online payments renegotiated to a lower cost to our constituents, all, everyone who uses our water services. And, and as Steve can attest, the company will not renegotiate with us unless we sign a new contract with them, but that contract, we can't sign it. That company is ACI, they absorbed official payments. Official payments was the only company, and is still the only company, that Frye, our accounting software, will use as a third-party merchant service. So as long as we have Frye, we can, we cannot do anything with our credit card payments and any type of processing other than going through that company. So that's what has prompted the look into a new software more than anything else.
How does Brownsburg use Frye? And they don't have the extreme credit card fees, I don't believe.
They might have had an initial contract with ACI, I don't know how long they've been using it, but they, and they may have, they're, I don't know what their contract requirements are, but Steve looked through it last year when we tried to renegotiate an ACI, with ACI, and he could not come to terms with any of their, their contracts and what they had wanted. So that was, it was about a four-month process, if I remember correctly, before we just kind of threw our hands up in the air and said, "We just can't, we just can't come to any agreement." So since that time, we've heard that there, there might be changes in the way that we want to take credit card payments or process the fees. And Frye will not work with any other companies other than ACI, they, they refuse to use the third-party merchant service. So with that, we started looking around. I initiated it, I brought Nicole in, I talked to Jason about it, Nicole in Utilities Billing, who's probably, in a way, like my counterpart in the Utilities Office. And we've tried to be inclusive, bringing all sorts of department heads in and just other departments in to see these other softwares that we could potentially consider going to. And with that, we've narrowed it down to about three that we've liked the most. Currently with Frye, I use 2015 as a kind of standard year because we didn't have nearly as many training costs for, with, with Frye that year, it was more of a normal year. And that was, we spent $28,000 that year with Frye. If we went with one of the other companies, the current favorite company is Civic Systems, and it would only be a $4,500 difference annually to go with them. There would definitely be upfront costs, we would have them convert data, these types of things, and pull all of the data from our current system. None of this is fun. I've been through software conversions in previous jobs, and it isn't fun, it's not exciting to talk about. But it's something that I think that, over time, this new software will save us money and time, and it brings more utility to the software than Frye does currently. For one example is planning. This software actually has a module where Lauren in her office can utilize it, and if she utilizes this software, and she was brought in on this whole discussion and was there for the demo, and would like to utilize it if possible, people in Utilities Department would be able to know when a building is ready for water meters. Everybody can access the same information if not, if read-only, if only it's read-only sometimes, and not being able to manipulate other people's data. But anyway, this is a, I have a very short kind of wish list that I've worked with, Councilman Wishak on, and, and the different members of the town. And we've come up with what we would like to see Frye do, and currently what Civic Systems does. We've worked out some annual savings of workflows, the workflows itself is specifically regarding invoice processing, and how long it takes to process invoices in Frye relative to what it would take with Civic Systems. And the annual savings would be, as you can see, approximately $3,000 to $10,000 of worked hours per year. And that would be based off of just my salary and me only putting in those invoices. And now other people also put in invoices, Sherry, and I know Nicole does, I would assume that maybe other people in Utilities do as well, so there would be potential more worked hours saved. And there are a lot of other advantages. I could talk a lot about this, and if you have questions, that would make, maybe make it easier.
Have you walked us through the other departments to see what they think it is versus Frye?
Yes, specifically I have. I've, and I've involved every department in this decision, and brought them in on the process, invited them to demos. We've had online demonstrations of multiple softwares, and we've even had one in-house demonstration of Civic Systems after they've done an online one, and we largely agree that they were our favorite.
Is this a State Board of Accounts-approved software provider?
Yes, it is. One town in Indiana currently uses it, and that's Long Beach, Indiana. I've actually reached out to their clerk treasurer, it's up on the coast in Lake Michigan. I've actually reached out to their clerk treasurer, talked to him for half an hour, he was extremely happy with the product. He said that their support staff is excellent, they're very happy with it. And this is a Midwest base, they're out of Madison, Wisconsin. A lot of places in Michigan, Wisconsin, Minnesota, Iowa, and Illinois tend to use it, they're trying to break into the Indiana market, so.
So aren't there a number of municipalities in Indiana who use Frye software for their accounting purposes?
Yes.
Like, I mean, a lot.
I don't know the specific number, I, I know there's probably at least a dozen.
So do they not all have the same problems? Well, I mean, why are they not switching over? All, all of them, I'm, I'm just confused why we're the only ones maybe having this problem?
I don't think that we're the only ones probably having this problem, I think it's that, you know, complacency, switching from one software to another is not a fun process, it's tedious, it's, it's very difficult, it's stressful. Not only that, but the unknown, changing from one thing to the next, you know, it can be scary. If you know Frye, and that's what you had perhaps when you came in, you know, you might just say, "Well, we're just going to stick with it, why change?"
Did you look to see how much we paid for Frye?
Yes, and that's why I put the 2015 annual cost, it varies.
How much did we pay for Frye?
Initially?
Yes.
It's not in the system. We don't have it in our...
We have a contract.
We don't have...
We have a paper contract, how much did we pay for Frye?
I don't know, it's not in Frye.
Well, I think that's an important, that's an important thing for us to know if we're going to consider this.
We spent this amount of money to buy Frye just three, four years ago, and now to be throwing the baby out with the bathwater because we haven't gone back to, are you using Crystal Reports to run programs, to run reports?
Yes.
Are you using it fully, to the full functionality of all of it, and do we have all the modules in place for this software?
Yes, we do.
No, we don't.
We do, we have all the modules.
No, we don't.
Okay.
So part of this whole process is we're identifying the wish list, and whether we stay with Frye or whether we go with somebody else, the point is to identify what we...
Who's wish list?
Well, a wish list from all the departments that Matt's put together.
But this is, this is a quote asking us to spend $154,000 tonight.
Okay, so I'm not asking...
I'm not asking to, to spend that tonight.
So my, my feeling on the whole software was, once we have this wish list from everybody, was to also reach out to Frye and tell Frye, "Hey, these are the things we're experiencing problems with, or these are the things we need your support to figure out better workflows, and see what Frye's solutions are to some of our wish list items, too."
So does this...
Not just Civic.
Does this, I mean, Dax is the town manager, and sort of a lot of things run through him at the town, does this include his wish list? Because, I mean, if it does, he hasn't told me that.
Well, I don't think that Dax really has a wish list so much as, because he doesn't use it on a daily basis, I mean, he probably does have certain things, but he's not a regular user.
He has a good idea of what the council might desire, I mean, so, I think that's why, that would be important.
He has backed me up on this, he has said that he would like to see us get off of Frye by fourth quarter.
Okay, I've never heard him tell me that.
Well, that's what he told me specifically.
Is Dax here?
Matt, can you clarify this?
Sure.
These Xs, you're saying that Frye cannot solve the ones that have an X?
That is currently correct, yes.
There's no green checks, so Frye can't solve any of these mountains?
Well, the green checks, we're unsure of right now, we haven't checked with everything on the list. I haven't had time to have a conversation with Frye about everything. However, the red checks are things that they currently do not do and do not plan to do in the future.
Then I would say this was prematurely brought in front of the council without doing your due diligence on this.
Well, I think this is extremely premature because we need to do all we can to try to make sure the system that we have is working before we just go out looking for the next best thing. That concerns me.
This is, Frye is our third software in the 10 years that I've been on council. The first one was Keystone, we went away from Keystone to Green Tree, which was not State Board of Account certified, we had to go back to Keystone, and now we're to Frye. Frye had a group, when that project was undertaken, it was a group of IT people, also the users in, we had the court and the utility there to help vet the whole software. We also brought in experts from Brownsburg and other communities to assist us with that. That's how I know that we are not utilizing this to the full potential. So we need to go back to the drawing board, go back to the original documents, and see what is not included in the modules, and what is, what is causing the hiccups here.
Okay, thank you for your time.
On to letter R, discuss an expenditure exceeding $5,000 for the Panther Park bathrooms. Nathan?
Yes, this was on the Park's five-year master plan, it is in need with all of our parks to have restroom facilities at them. We've got two quotes listed here, I have a third, which came in much higher than both of these. So looking at putting in restrooms at Panther Park using the capital of money.
Nathan, when I looked at these proposals, one was green flush, and it's obviously playing on the name, but it was one that didn't even require to be hooked up to water and sewer to a degree, it was cycling through itself, and then you'd just maybe pump it out or whatever. And the other one was a traditional bathroom setup. Would it be smarter for us to maybe go with the more environmentally friendly solution, I should say?
The green flush is going to cost a lot more in maintenance costs of our utilities, guys are going to have to go out with their pump and pump it out regularly versus we have storm sewer there. It's pretty much a giant porta-pot, is what the green one is. They're intended more for, like Yellowstone National Park out in the middle of nowhere where you don't have utility access. The green flush, the reason it's in is it's, it was being looked at as a potential for Walker Farms because we don't have access to sewer there without spending a small fortune to get, we're going to have to put in almost a lift station to put a bathroom in at Walker Park, because there's no, we can't gravity sewer.
We will have to extend water and sewer to a traditional bathroom if we put it in Panther Park.
There's water and sewer there.
It's right there.
So the, and that's the first due quote is them coming in, and we had another one quote, and we're getting the quotes, but wanted to put it in, it was a capital project that was talked about.
Nathan, what's your timeline on this project?
I would have to get with first due to see when they could start with going for it, but if approved, they think it's something they could have done in a few months, based on their workload at the time. So the hope would be to have it open late summer, early fall.
By fall, that'd be great.
Thanks for putting this in front of us, Nathan. This is something that's much needed for Panther Park.
And thank you for looking at the green alternatives as well, because I know that we've always stressed, we'd like our parks to be as progressive as possible, and to continue watching and monitoring that technology and its application is still important, I appreciate that.
Just not too progressive.
Not progressive enough yet.
Well, and they, they just opened their, they notified me two weeks ago, they just opened their first factory building, these in Indiana, so they're trying to get to this market, and they're trying to evolve their technology, but it's still a very, it's a giant porta-pot.
Free.
I mean, it's green, but...
There's more bathrooms to add on to your due software, right?
Yes.
More teepee. Nathan, I'm sorry that we stepped out for so, we were in my office trying to figure out two items, one was a brief emergency, but the other one was this. His budget, the Park's budget, took a hit in 2016 with a reduction in the tax rate. And the reason why there was a reduction in the tax rate was that there was a miscode of, nothing, I think, that was, when I say miscode, it wasn't a mistake, it was just, a grant money was in the Park's fund that, that caused the Park's fund to look like it had more money than it actually did. And because of that, the Park's rate was reduced substantially from like 7% or .7 to .4, or .07 to .04, whatever it is. When you get to 17, what happens is, we've, we've spent nearly all of, you know, Park's money, because it only, it only brought in like $156,000, you take that $156,000, add it to the reserves, and you had about $72,000 left in the Park Fund at the end of the year, when we should actually have about $240,000, $250,000 in the Park Fund at the end of the year. There's an oversight that we did not catch, and the financial consultants didn't catch That leaves him with little to no money in his infrastructure budget to pay for bathrooms. I would argue, however, and Steve, I'm not sure if Town General Capital Outlake can kick in help here, I'm assuming it can. That's the line that you love the most, and...
Right, you've turned it into a slush fund.
Yeah, well, I'm not trying, not, no, not trying to, just...
A slush fund.
Oh, yes, good word. Flush fund.
A flush fund, yes, nice. Using portions of that fund to help fund the bathroom costs, so.
I'd make a motion, we authorize the expenditure not to exceed $60,000 for the Panther Park bathrooms from first... I'd make a motion. We authorize the expenditure not to exceed sixty thousand dollars for the Panther Park bathrooms from first due company.
Second. We've got a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion?
From who?
First due.
First due, okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted five to zero.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Up next, letter S. Discuss an expenditure exceeding five thousand dollars midpoint interchange justification study.
Mr. President, I don't know if I'm out of order here, but County Council President Jacob has approached me and has asked if he could briefly speak. And I'm fairly certain he doesn't want to sit here and listen to me primarily ramble on for the next thirty to forty minutes. Hopefully it won't take that long.
I think you're right.
If we could allow him time to approach the microphone, I think that that would be ideal at this moment.
That would be fantastic. Please come forward.
I'd make the motion that we amend the agenda to permit County Council Jacob, President, to speak.
Oh, second.
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted.
Dax is mistaken. I did want to hear all he had to say. Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Steve Jacob. I reside in rural Whitestown with my family. And, Mr. President, appreciate you recognizing Councilwoman Nichelle and I as members of the council, I think. But I rise today for another issue. I also have the pleasure of serving on the Convention and Visitors Bureau as president. And we just voted to provide some things for your beer fest. While we lowered the, the grant money, that's only because it really doesn't put people going to motel rooms. And that's our main objective. But this is a great event, so we are providing a turnkey band stage and the music system, everything with it. And it's actually going to be delivered on Friday and I learned tonight you're going to use it on Friday for a second band, which is pretty cool. But then we're also providing quite a bit of advertising out on the interstate. But that's not why I'm here. My executive director, or our executive director, has on multiple occasions spoken how nicely it is to work with Whitestown and especially Nathan. It's just awesome. He's super to work with. I've worked with him on some other issues and he's just fantastic. So I rise tonight to make that comment to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job, Nathan.
Good work, Nathan.
Can I tell you what he did? What happened was we generally were getting five thousand dollars from the CVB for marketing for the event. This year, they reduced that to eighteen hundred now. Mind you, they were getting us the stage and other items. But Nathan sent me an email and we, he could have voiced or expressed his consternation at that reduction. But he did not. He fully understood the reasoning, was appreciative of the stage being given. And I believe that some of the CVB board members, at least who I've, what I have heard is that they were very, they wanted to give Nathan commendation because they did not necessarily receive that peaceful of a discussion from a few of the other grantees. So that's what happened here. And I thank County Council President and CVB President Jacob for acknowledging Nathan and his excellent work.
Perhaps you would take them all over to the hotels after the Friday night concert.
You don't get to sit down.
That's right. I had you veer off path. So this expenditure is, we have been working with NDOT for nearly a year on the potential construction of the midpoint interchange. The midpoint interchange came to life as Anson came to life in two thousand and four and two thousand and five. It was going to be the interchange that took you into the lifestyle center portion of Anson, which the recession essentially put a death knell to. But that does not mean that it's not an important piece of infrastructure as we grow. As you can see, NDOT had to somehow punch an interchange into Fishers way after the fact and it was incredibly costly. They do not want to repeat that. So thanks to Steve and our great partnership with Bose Public Affairs Group and John Cochran, myself, Dan and Huck Lewis, I almost called him mayor. I almost came out of my mouth. We all in a very unified effort, and NDOT has been wonderful, have been talking to NDOT about moving forward with that. We think we have some preliminary good news, but I'll save that for when I know that we have it for fact. But this is an interchange justification study that's basically an engineering study. I don't know if you want to come up and talk about this because I can't even, half the time can't remember the name of the thing. And Dan can kind of tell you what it's about and how this would be part of our partnership with NDOT to get a seventeen million dollar, twenty million dollar interchange built.
It's a interchange justification report. I always call it an IJR for short. We've done several of these and you don't see too many of these in Indiana. There's been the one over at Fishers. There's been one at Greenwood. But in order to get an interchange on a interstate highway, you have to go through federal highway. And you have to go through a report and some traffic modeling to prove that that interchange will not be a detriment to the other two interchanges that are adjacent and several other factors on forecasting traffic modeling. So this gets us to the front door with this forty thousand dollars that we're asking for. Gets us to the front door of federal highway. Gets us a little bit of environmental to see if there's a big issue. And it gets us some traffic modeling and a report started so we can go meet with federal highway. And once federal highway gives us a blessing, then we go on to stage two, which isn't included in this. We think we at least need to get this stage moving.